Call to order. Thank you for coming. We met in closed session. We have a quorum, so let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to begin with the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, so moved.
All three?
Second.
Greg Pavisic?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Cavanado?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't here for one of the days. Thank you. This is our first reception of visitors. This is the opportunity for anybody to address the board on anything on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we'll move along to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent search firm discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. The first item on the agenda is the superintendent search firm discussion. Board members have all had the opportunity to review packets from three firms. Our tentative plan is to allow the board to interview the firms that it wishes to talk to on May 4th after the reorganization meeting. And we will give instructions to those firms presenting about the timeframes and what they're supposed to present. What we need to know from you tonight is which of these, or all three, do you want to hear from? And when we sent the mailing, or excuse me, the cover, we anticipated that there would be six or seven members present, and so recommendation was one more than half, or four. Here we have five present, so the recommendation is altered to be one more than half, or three. And I don't know how you'd like to proceed except to go around and ask who board members want to hear from.
Why don't we, Julia, do you mind going first?
No, I don't mind. I think the two that I would really like to talk to are Hazard &amp; Young and School Exec Connect. I don't know that I need to hear from the first firm, having read all of the information, but I would like to, and having direct experience with School Exec Connect, they were the firm that we used when we decided on Dr. McDonald, but they still helped us a great deal in the initial stages of that search. And of course, we've worked with a couple of people from Hazard &amp; Young, too. So those are the two I'd like to see. I don't know that I need to see the other one.
I agree with Julia. You know, having worked with both of the other two firms in other areas, I was a little unsure about that one.
Okay. I was fine with all three.
I'm going to defer to Pete and Mark. I have not worked with any of them, nor do I know anybody in any of them, and so I'm going to defer. I don't have a choice of either one. So I would say I'm going to, would Pete and Mark say, hey, we did our homework, we did our due diligence, we're presenting these. I'd be...
Well, and that's what these three are, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm happy with all three.
I'm actually on the same page with Julia and Terry on this one. I had exactly the same impression of the proposals and spent a fair amount of time going over them. And in fact, of the three, I already, I kind of have a favorite out of one of them. Of them, I have one favorite, just because of, you know, connection and familiarity with the district. And the one group two has, District 58 just used recently to select their superintendent as well. So I'd be happy just with the two.
And it's the same two?
The same two.
Okay. Well, there we go.
So we bring in the two.
Mm-hmm.
Rick?
Is that okay with you two?
Yeah, because if you really feel...
If you feel strongly.
Well, number one, I would first say that the board only needs one.
Right.
Okay, so the idea is to pick the one that is going to work best with you.
Well, the one we're ruling out, I don't have any information on Pete or Mark. Why did they make the cut? Or were they on the bubble when you presented them and you wanted to have three to have three?
I liked their materials, as I said last week. I know the individual, I know all the individuals of those three firms, I know all the people that would be working with the board. I believe all are really good. It's a matter of opinion who would work better with the board, and it's really not my place to have that opinion. It's the board's place. But I would say, knowing them, and also knowing others that work in that firm, I have a good feeling about all of them.
Okay. Is it worth, because I think it's only going to cost us 30 minutes of our time. Is it worth the 30 minutes to have all three, just to keep the other two honest, maybe?
We'd be meeting with them one at a time.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at an hour versus an hour and a half, is what I think is on the agenda, right? 30 minutes for each one to present?
And questions?
Then questions.
Yeah.
You know...
I don't know.
I would be okay with that if you like.
Well, wait a second. Okay, now wait a second.
Okay.
Let's all stop waffling.
I'm not waffling.
Three people wanted to go with the same two firms. So I say, that was the original plan.
That was the agreement, yeah, okay.
Let's do it.
Fine.
Of course, if you don't like the two that presented.
We can always call back.
Always ask the third one to come in, if we feel...
Well, you know, if that's the case, I would hate to postpone it even further if you just have it done at one time.
So is anybody changing their vote?
I'm not.
No.
No, no. I don't think I would choose them after even reading there.
There we go. Third quarter financial report.
Very good. Mr. Stalen. It's the Mr. Stalen Show for the next 45 minutes.
Yeah, I apologize in advance. There's additional coffee in the kitchen. The third quarter report really is, and I do have a lot of items connected here together, so I'm going to go kind of quickly through this. There really aren't any big surprises. There's one issue that I want to address, and I did in my memo, but I want to expand on a little bit today to make sure it's not overstated or understated. Fund balances, though, are creeping up a little bit at this period, which is just about right, you know, because we do take in more revenues and expenditures. Fund balances are very much in line with what we expected at this point. As you went through the memo, you saw the revenues are virtually 100% collected, and expenditures are about $58,000 out of $83 million, 58 million expended. So this is about normal for us. So we can flip right through to the revenue section. There's the revenues there. I guess he's going to try and blow it up here for us. The revenues, one thing that popped out of the revenues for us in particular, first, overall, 94% revenues collected compared to 95% last year or so. We're very close. The key area here was general state aid and other is kind of, we did get, or we will get dinged in the next quarter. We are aware of that. That's one area that we were very conservative when we budgeted that item. We actually, even in spite of the fact that they're cutting us $125,000 more, and they're, they let us know at the end of March, already in the middle of our fiscal year, we probably still will exceed budget by between $50,000 and $100,000 for all of our state aid. We already have the reports. Now, that's if they pay it, and they don't prorate it any further. But we have a little bit of room on the revenue side, just because we were very conservative. I guess we could say we guessed right on this one. It was pretty obvious, so. On the federal side, federal is actually where we're going to be down, and it's interrelated to our local collections for food services. And the federal aid where we have, we're going to be under budget very likely, is the National School Lunch Program support, only because we had expected Quest to really push harder and really have a bigger impact. We're going to have just a little bit more in National School Lunch dollars this year than we did last year. They are improving the program, and we are seeing more type A lunches being served, but we're not seeing a dramatic increase like they thought. And we, here's where we guessed wrong. I pushed harder on the National School Lunch Program, thinking they would have a much bigger impact. Doesn't look like we will, and so that's where we'll be short in the federal by the end of the year. Probably just about by the same amount as the state will be over. So between those two categories, we should come out okay. But the National School Lunch Program, we noticed the food services are down. If you notice, the budget amounts are 1.15 million in each year, last year and this year, but we're about 105,000 down, or 10,000, I guess, down. So we looked into, we don't think there's any negative problems in terms of money missing or anything. We just think it is operational in terms of that they, we know the vending is down. Partly it is because of limitations for the National School Lunch Program and vending. It has been dropping year after year. But also, adult sales, we think, are down, and we think à la carte sales, which usually is pretty strong, is not as high. And so we do have a meeting with them this week. We're going to go through it in detail. On the other hand, we don't think it's, you know, just not being reported, because on the expenditure side, they're going to be between $200,000 and $300,000 below budget in terms of what they claim from us for expenditures. So even though we're down 110,000 here, we're going to be down maybe 250,000 to 300,000 on the expense side, because they turn in those receipts, but then they bill us for what they've done to collect those receipts, and they're going to be short on the expenditure side, too. So we're going to be okay in terms of the balance sheet, but it does give me concern about the program. And we knew we had a really rough start with them because of the change in software. Next year, we're going to use a different software with them, and we're going to have a discussion about possibly, and I don't want to, but have about different things we can do to improve the queue. One, what would possibly be a cash-free lunch line, where you have to put money on account, and you do go through, and there's no money exchanged in the cash lines. It happens at some other schools, some schools that have a much higher, free and reduced, have done that. So we want to explore that to see if it's feasible for a district that has the amount of cash sales. Because that would mean either parents go to a online to pay, or they send their child in with some cash, and they have to go to one spot in the district before lunch or during lunch hour and put money on account there. So we're still working that idea through. But obviously, the concern, the biggest concern we have is the program. We want to make sure that it's serving as many kids as we can. We don't really understand why the à la carte's done yet. We're going to find that out, and we'll have a report to you. If not at the May meeting, we'd have something in to communicate sooner to let you know what we find out for that. And move on to the expenditures. Really, we're 70% spent this year and 69% comparatively last year. Salary and benefits are almost identical in terms of the percent overall for when you combine salary and benefits. We're right on the money. And the key area, really, we're having a little bit higher special ed tuition, but we're under a little bit on Volk Ed tuition. So that may balance itself out pretty well as soon. I think, I'm going to give you the short, the Reader's Digest version. I think all in all, things are in line with expectations. Purchase services, the food service would be one exception, and they're down. And one explanation for the purchase services, why it's 76% this year compared to 72% last year, is at the beginning, the first quarter of this year, we had some transportation bills from the prior carrier that had been held and had not been given to us to pay. And so we paid some of last year's bills in the first quarter of this year, which overstated, and I reported that at the mid-year. We're over, but when we get to the accrual basis, financial statements, we will straighten that out with payables and clean it up. So we think overall, we're going to be fine with that piece. And really, that's the quick view. I don't know if you have any particular questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Mark Condon?
Okay. Next agenda item is employee medical and dental premiums. Each year, we go through a process throughout the year of monitoring our claim history. In the last three years, we've had very moderate claim history, in which case that has allowed us to build our balance in our healthcare fund. But this year, we've had a relatively tough claim history, which has eaten up a large portion of the balance, and now we're looking at an increase.
Okay. And this, I'll refer to this in a minute. You can leave it up, Greg, but that's reflective of some of the benefit changes that we're proposing. And we had a meeting, the only time we could coordinate all the members of the insurance committee was late Friday. It was the end of the day on Friday, and so I apologize, but that's why you've got some of this information this morning. And this was prepared by our hub, International Brokers and Advisors, and they sent it over this afternoon. So that's why, it's in the packet now, so you can refer to it. We put it on late, though. And we really wanted to have everybody in insurance committee there, because we saw that, you know, we had some big issues, and we knew we needed to make some benefit reductions. And so that's why we went to that extreme extent of scheduling it so late. Overall, we had about, we would have to do about an 18% increase. We've had in primarily the PPOA plan, because that's our largest plan, covers most of our employees, a pretty dramatic increase in claims. And whenever you have that, we do have some stop-loss insurance, which cuts them off at a certain level. But when we have those, you look at those underlying causes, and fortunately, they don't seem to be ongoing recurring issues of cancer issues or things that we think would be recurring possibly for multiple years. And so we do think this could likely be an anomaly year. And we had one of these about five years ago, where we had one bad year. And the mistake, I would say, we made at that time was we really pushed up the premium, because we had only so many months of history. You use those bad months, and you have to project them forward, and you end up with a pretty high increase. And so we did that, and then we didn't, we might have marked it too high, because then after that, we were building our reserves, and we didn't have the history going forward, although we did have some serious claims at that time that we thought would be more ongoing. This time, we don't see that, and so hub is saying, let's be careful not to overreact. It is important to note, though, if the trend doesn't pull back a little bit, we could possibly go down to as low as a 20% reserve by the end of this plan year. So that would be, August of 2015, we could have a 20% reserve, which is the bottom of the window or target range. You know, we were as high as 63% a year ago.
Wow.
And at the beginning of this year, we were 52%. And we expected to eat down the reserve a bit this year, because it was pretty high, you know, and it was, we don't, hopefully, we hope it does not go down 20%, because if we have 20% left, the reserve really, the first thing it has to pay is if we were to go and get out of being self-insured and go to a fully insured program, we would have runout claims.
Yeah.
And with electronic media now, it's really only about a month to a month and a half, maybe six weeks of claims that aren't already paid. So it's very fast pay systems now. And so that equates, for in our case, up to a maximum, maybe 12% of our claims. So 12% from the 20% reserve means we only have 8% left for a buffer for next year. Historically, that would have been okay, but the way that things are running right now, we're concerned. If it runs down to 20%, that means the claims are still going to progress at a terrible rate, and we might, you know, run through that. So we had to, we knew we had to increase premium, and we had to make changes in the plan benefits. And that's what we are doing here. This is, we had a larger grid that we worked with at insurance committee, but this is what really the committee agreed would be sufficient, and hopefully sufficient changes, to bring our increase down to 13%, which everybody felt that was a manageable increase for both the district and for the employees. And they're willing to go forward to the employees and bring that to them. And they realize they haven't had an increase in the PPO plan for the last three years. You know, if trend is 7.5%, we've been dodging bullets for a while, you know. But again, part of that reason is we might have marked it too high.
Right.
Before, you know. So they've been paying maybe elevated premiums for a while. And so 13% will be a stretch, but it's, we think it's the right balance. We do think we need to keep that reserve protected.
Was the committee in agreement on that?
Absolutely, yeah.
They were?
Absolutely. We have a very good working committee. Everybody, there was a good dialogue. Everybody talked about it and said, agreed that this is the right way to go.
Okay.
And so what's in red there on the top, really, they had deductible, and you have to skip columns, because the PPOA is on the left with the, and white, the white columns, and then PPOB, and then the proposed PPOA in red is going from 300 to 500 for in-network deductible, 1,500 family, single out of network, 300 to 500, and 1,500 for the family. And then the out-of-pocket maximums of the other increase, to go from 900 to 1,500 for single, 2,700 to 4,500 for family. And then out of network, single, going from 1,500 to 2,500 for single, and then family, 4,500 to 7,500. And it still would be, we don't want to have too much shifting in the plans because of benefit changes. And we still, because really, we still are trying to hold on to the PPOB, because even with a 13% increase in that plan, it'll be a very reasonable plan for many people who want, still want a PPO, because their doctors are not in an HMO network that they're using. So if we were to shift the benefits too much in a negative way for PPOA, we feel we would have movement to the PPOB, which would say, oh, that's okay, that's good. But what it may do is, those people are going to have higher claims that are going to go into the B, and they could make that plan start to fail, basically. Would have to, would drive the premiums up in that plan to the point where it would be almost the same as PPOA. So we need to have some differential in the benefits, and it allows us to have a differentiated premium and still have an option for our employees. And so that's, there was a lot of discussion about how to finesse this, so we would still have that. And an added thing that we did this year is really because of the Affordable Care Act, added all the way to the right-hand side, a new plan, which meets the minimum eligibility criteria for the plan. You have to have a plan that is, the annual premiums are less than 9.5% of the lowest-paid individual's annual salary. And with 36-week employees and, you know, not even full-time, it's very difficult. You do annualize their salaries, but it's still very difficult. And so this plan, we talked about this actually through support staff negotiations, if you recall those of you that were in that, that we were going to add a plan to meet the letter of the law, and we've done that. And this is a basic HMO, I'm sorry, PPO plan. But Blue Cross has, if you were also to go to this exchange, it's virtually the same as many plans on exchange. So this is, if someone didn't want to buy insurance from us, through us, and went to the exchange, this is something they would be selecting. It's kind of like a super-high deductible plan.
I'd say, yeah.
So Mark, I'm sorry, so that on Plan Option 1, PPO Plan B, there's no longer going to be a B, or it's going to be the same?
No, it's going to be the B, but we're just not making any changes in the benefits.
Okay. Okay, so it's going to be the current plan?
Yeah. Honestly, the, I mean, directly, the PPO plan, those claims are the ones running the hottest and running the worst. None of the four large claims were in the PPOB plan. And so we've talked about it as a committee and didn't feel they're going to share in the benefit, premium increase, not the benefit, but the premium increase, because that's the best way to hold these plans together, is to increase them both. We didn't want to also take away some benefits for that particular plan. So I don't know if that explained it well, but...
Are they pretty much split between the two?
No, PPOA is the biggest plan. And so making those changes in the A plan really have a bigger impact on the total cost of the claims. I don't know the percentage. I would probably say 60 to 70% are in the A district-wide.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much more. And then HMOs are very popular still, too, so.
Oh, okay.
So I gather you haven't had the huge increase in HMO claims. I know, I realize that's not self-insured. But have HMO claims been high, too, or?
Well, they're self-insured, so we don't really know what the experience has been.
Yeah.
But I think we've been, I think we've been good there, because
Yeah, we don't have access to that data.
The only increase in the HMO will be 3.2%. In fact, you can get to the graph thing. That was part of the...
The first memo?
The narrative, actually. It was 3.2%, and that was only because of the increase in Affordable Care Act fees attributable to fully insured plans. And so I think
But you're right, we really don't know.
I think our history's been pretty good there. And they have been increasing over the last couple of years.
Right.
You know, 3%, 5%, 7%. So the HMOs have been growing when the other plans were stagnant in terms of their premiums. And I didn't warn him ahead of time that he should do that, so.
That's okay. It's okay, Greg.
We agreed there were three things. This is number four.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you. So it's the last page of this.
Last page?
Yeah, so page down, all the way to the last. There we go. This is exhibit, so, excuse me. So 13%, this is what the annual increases would be. 13% for the Plan A and B. Bronze is a new plan, so there's really no increase there. And the HMOs would have a three, actually 3.2% increase because of the ACA fees. Affordable Care Act fees for the self-insured plan, as you saw in the memo, are only half a percent. They're like $26,000. They actually went down this year from $45,000, so. There is a Cadillac tax that we will have to, you know, so I think what's going to happen, we think, we used to think we were two or three years out from having to worry about that. We might only be two years out now. And so probably next year, we will have deeper benefit changes, probably higher deductible changes, because the point of that Cadillac tax is so that eventually, all plans, because that Cadillac is a certain dollar amount for a plan, and it's a fixed number that doesn't increase with inflation. So eventually, all plans will go past that unless you change your benefits dramatically. And the purpose of that is revenue. Eventually, by having it be higher than that, there's less, let's put it this way, if you're paying more in deductible and out-of-pockets, you're not getting as much of a tax break, because your premium's going to stay lower. And so it's a way for them to collect more revenue out of paychecks, because your withholdings will be fixed. They won't keep going up, because your premiums won't go up. You'll just be paying more in out-of-pocket costs. So it's a revenue, that's what, maybe I'm being too political there, but that's the belief of why.
Isn't there some discussion about doing something with that Cadillac thing, though? I thought I'd read that recently.
I think the Republicans are talking about doing more than that right now.
Yeah, well, I get that right now.
So it may not, it may not survive, the whole thing may not survive, obviously, with the, you know, the four challenges to the plan and everything.
So the committee was okay with the bronze plan?
Yeah, because they understood that that was just more like a statutory requirement.
Yeah, it's not like they're probably going to have a lot sign up for it.
We don't think anybody will, you know, but it's got to be there.
Totally crazy.
Got to be there, you know, so.
So, Mark?
And that's it. So really, this was informational. The action item will hopefully be at the May 18th board meeting, approve, through these rates. And normally, we would be opening our enrollment maybe tomorrow. But Pete and his staff have, are going to go to, hopefully, a bit of an online enrollment. And they, they're having, not having trouble, but they're actually haven't had a chance to put that together yet. And so they're going to put that together, and that, we're going to make open enrollment start really the day after the next board meeting. We hopefully can get it done faster when it's on that one. But we want to put out in the interim, enter information about But we want to put out in the interim, inter-information about the increases, information about the benefit changes. We want to have all-day meetings. We'll have an all-day room at each building where we'll have the insurance representatives there explaining the differences where people come in during their lunch break or their open hour. And so we really want to start doing that now, before open enrollment, so they can do the open enrollment quickly. And so if there is an issue that you have a concern about this, we'd like to know now because then we may stop that process. We wouldn't, so.
I have a question, not really an issue. Why is the Cobra so low?
Cobra is one hundred and two percent. The maximum you can charge Cobra is one hundred and two percent of your normal.
It's on the HMO, though.
So they're only two percent higher
Yeah, the rest of them are a lot higher.
Than the plan itself. But we put it in there for reference purposes for, this will be the document next month that we'll ask you to approve, and then we'll have that to give somebody if they want to know what the Cobra costs are. Because this will be the official rates that we, we charge. And so by Cobra law, by law, it's the two percent over
Oh, okay, I thought it was a
The normal premium.
Higher percentage. Thank you.
True.
My only concern is those high deductibles, but I don't know what else you do. I mean, even with the PPO and the
No, and actually, well, there's a change in the law next year. Actually, you're out-of-pocket for prescriptions, you know, for, when you have an out-of-pocket, that will go towards your deductible now. So there is a change. So now, we're going to have different tiers in there, but, so that'll change some of that deductible. There, overall, maybe a, a little bit of a benefit to some, you know, so not as bad because, and that's a national, that's an Affordable Care Act change. So your deductibles, starting next year, next plan year for us, have to be used towards your out-of-pocket deductible. So soften that a little.
I'll get you one way or another.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Interfund transfers.
It's the Mark Stielin Show.
Yeah, I'm really
How many interfund transfers?
And coffee's in the next room.
It's not working anymore.
Oh, no.
There I am.
It's not working anymore.
It just works.
We go.
But it came, it's slow, but it's working.
It's coming, I got it. Mine's working. Took it a while. It's okay.
I'm glad I'm not the only one. Usually, I'm the only one.
We're all on this together.
And this one, I'm going to, you know, I figured by this time, you'd need some little extra stimulation, so we're going to have a PowerPoint.
Animation? Is there animation?
Yeah, you know, a little color.
Yes, to help Don with his first.
Can you get my PowerPoint going there? Here we go.
Ooh.
I hope you have some nice colors.
Look at, he does, look at, it's all green.
Being the color of money.
Okay, so let's see if this goes. Here we go. So these were first introduced at a little bit in the memo to the board for the budget approval in September, August and September. And I'm just, I'm going to just, again, try and keep it fast-paced here, but please stop me if I go too quickly on something. But the real rationale for these transfers, to simplify the analysis of the financial position, from time to time, there's been, why do we have such a big balance here, a negative balance and a positive balance? And I've always told the board and anybody who asks, I could wipe them out at, you know, one board meeting if we wanted. We could offset them, and they could be gone. The original reason for some of them were really just, you know, different, I would say quasi-political positions, and that with the tax caps, there was a possibility that some of it would open up one day and open up maybe building or open up pension law because of the way that was pinching all the schools, but we realized those days are gone. And honestly, we could have offset these things years ago, and, you know, I just, we just never had to. There was never a question that came up, so. The purpose here will be to eliminate the negative balances, and then ultimately, we'll be able to reuse the number of funds because ultimately, we'll be eliminating the working cash fund altogether by collapsing it into the other funds. And so the, again, talked about it in September. It's only transferring fund balances between funds, so there's a cash and fund balance is the journal entry. And it's an other financing source use of funds, which is a specific category used by generally-accepted accounting procedures and practices. So it's not a revenue, it's not an expense, it's just a straightforward transfer of the fund. There's no change in our district overall financial position or condition because of doing this. In fact, some people say, wow, you really improved your position. I go, no, we didn't really improve anything. So transfers, here we go, here's your color. So we have two different categories, though, that we have to do, and there's going to be two transfers from each of these categories for a total of four transfers ultimately. Working cash, first transfer will be to abate working cash. And abate, in this case, means less than a hundred percent. If you move the entire working cash to other funds, you're abolishing it. If you move less than a hundred percent, you're abating it. When you abate it, you can go to any fund that needs it. If you abolish it, you have to go to the Ed Fund only. So there's different laws that come into play. So first thing we're going to do is abate ten point eight million of the working cash fund, transfer that to the operations and maintenance fund, ten point six of that, and two hundred thousand to transportation.
And that leaves us
And actually, you know what? I'm sorry, that isn't transportation, say IMRF. It's going to knock out, I move these things around so much today, to IMRF.
Okay.
All right, and you'll see it on a graph on the end here. Again, it's an abatement, and when you do that, you can't take a hundred percent out, and you have to leave an amount in the working cash fund that is equal to nickel levy, basically, of your most recent EAV, which is about two million dollars. It's just under two million dollars. We're going to leave a little bit more than two million dollars in there, just to stave off any kind of a challenge we might have. And then it can go to any fund in an abatement. Second transfer is education and transportation, five point one-four from education and one point two million of transportation fund, and we're going to the operations and maintenance fund there. And obviously, the operations and maintenance fund was the largest deficit, and that's why the first two actions here are to get the operations and maintenance fund totally out of the red. And it actually leaves it with a surplus, right, until we do, well, a note about this transfer is that there's a permanent transfer from Ed and transportation funds. There's another specific law that covers this piece. It's a one-time, non-recurring transaction, so they want it to be, they don't want you to do this every year. It does require a public hearing, so we'll have a quick public hearing in May, and then we have to publish notice of that hearing, you know, at least seven days before, and not more than thirty days before. And so we're going to do that. The third transfer is to take operation and maintenance, which we just bolstered up with those first two transactions, took it out of the negative, took it into a very high surplus, and we're going to move now from operations and maintenance, three point one million, to the capital projects fund. Capital projects fund is a sub-fund of the site and construction group. This is where the master, there's master site money in there and one sub-fund, and there's another sub-fund, which is the master facility plan balance, which has been a negative, and it's been negative since two thousand and two, probably. Large litigation that was involved with Galbain. We had quite a few, it was, one time was close to five million dollars negative, but we've been paring it down. But at this point, we've been carrying this balance, and we decided, let's just get rid of it. Let's get rid of it all. Doesn't change the total position of the district, but it's, it is better to get rid of this balance and all the negatives, because people will look at that and say, you know, how are you going to fund that? So we're going to eliminate the capital projects. And there is technically, in the school code, there isn't a fund called capital projects or site and construction. But in the governing, GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board, and in the State Board of Education, they do have and want you to use a capital projects fund. There just isn't a way to levy for it. And so when you have a large capital project, everybody wants you to account for it in a separate fund. But technically, the attorneys say it's really a sub-fund, excuse me, of the operations and maintenance fund. So it's really, this, they would, they will say, even though we'll have a resolution to do this, that this is not really a transfer between funds, because they're saying it's really in the operations and maintenance fund now.
Anyway.
Yeah. But that'll be our third transfer, and we'll have a resolution for that next month as well. And the fourth transfer will be to abolish the working cash fund. There'll be, should be a remaining, whatever remaining amount, should be about two point three, four million, and that will go to the educational fund.
So that's all going to be happening?
It'll all be four, I believe it'll be four resolutions in the next meeting, except this one. I have a question to the attorney, he hasn't been able to respond yet. This may be in June. It has to be done, the abolishment
End of the fiscal year.
Has to occur at the end of the fiscal year. And part of that is because you have investments, and they want it to be whatever you close up at the end of the year, you move it all the Ed Fund. And so it can only be done at the end of the fiscal year in terms of the actual transaction. The rest of them can be done in May, right after the board meeting. So, and there's the abolishment, a hundred percent what's left, and it can only go to the Ed Fund. This is it in a graph form, and this is what I started with, and I'm thinking, I said I better, I better, I better take it through the narrative first.
This means a lot to me.
The first column is funds, the different funds. The second column is the estimated end of year fund balances without the transfers. And I'm rounding these numbers, and they are obviously going to change because we'll have some, you know, we'll have actual transactions since when the budget was approved and what they are now. But the first column, really, the way to look at this are the four columns after the estimated end of year fund balances are the four different transactions. And if you see looking down, they should all balance out to zero. So in the first case, you have the working cash fund, ten point six million going to operations and maintenance, and remember, I had it on the graph before, two hundred thousand going to transportation. It goes to the IMRF fund. This is the correct presentation of that. And that totals ten point eight coming out of the working cash fund. And if you look down below, I'm going to see if this is, okay, that wasn't what I wanted to do. There it is. The working cash, if you look down below, the operating funds subtotal, this is our formal operating funds that you would see in the quarterly reports and all the monthly reports that we give you when we talk about the operating funds. These will wash out to zero, so there's no change in the operating funds here. The educational and trans, six point three million coming out of the operations and maintenance, going into operations and maintenance, that's a positive, and it's coming from the Ed Fund and the transportation fund, one point two million. The third one, this is the one that's going operations and maintenance to its sub-fund called capital projects. And it will change our measurement factor when we subtotal operating funds. It doesn't change the bottom line. Bottom line is nine point five million, and it's nine point five million here. But when we look at operating funds now, you're going to see that three million dollars lower, because we've used building fund, ultimately, it was working cash fund, and we're, or Ed Fund, excuse me, and it's going into the capital projects fund. So it will give, will give us a smaller percentage when we look at these things. Now, the other piece that we've always had off the balance sheet, as well as the health benefits reserve, which is dropping, but that's always been off the balance sheet as well. And all this is very confusing, I understand it, so don't expect to feel real comfortable right now with what I just talked about. But it's why we also made adjustments in the statement of position that you get with your monthly board packet. So we're going to try and make that a simpler document for you to look at and for you to track it into exhibits like this or exhibits on the quarterly report, so you can see it. And you'll see things like the education and health fund, you'll be able to see, it's already been there, but it was a very cluttered exhibit in the past, and we think we've cleaned it up, and we've got the captions so that it looks a little bit, I think, easier to follow. And there's a couple of other funds down here that we really don't talk about much, debt service funds and the activity funds. So back to this, operations and maintenance, we're going to take money from the building fund, operations and maintenance fund, and we're going to put it into the capital project funds to wipe out the deficit in that fund, and we won't have to deal with it anymore. And then we'll abolish the working cash fund, whatever's left in the end of June, and wipe that out. So.
So basically, bottom line is, you're just cleaning up the balance sheet and getting rid of some of the funds that we don't always work out of all the time.
Well, the one
The only one that's really going away is the working cash. The other two are just going to have zero, or the other three are just going to have zeros in them?
Well, here's where they roughly should end up. This is where, end of year with the transfers, so the working cash will be zero, so that fund will be gone.
Oh, altogether.
Altogether. We're going to abolish it, and it'll be gone. And so these will be some of the balances, and so when we look at it, this is where we, what we'll be looking at for our balances. I mean, this is the part that gets a little confusing, and it makes us all nervous, because we won't see it in there, but really, for the last ten years, it's what we see on the inside.
It's just been negative.
We've been managing it differently. We know that that negative is there, we know that the Ed Fund has been carrying it, and we know that, you know, money has been accruing into debt service fund, but we, no matter what other people ask us to do, I will not recommend that we get rid of that debt service mounts in there, that, until we are bonds-free, until we have no debt service out there.
So is it safe to say that maybe when we go to look at this again, if you show us what it's going to look like at the very end, you know, with all these
Well, this is, this is close to what it should look like.
Just the one
This is based on budget, but we've had actual, and we've had transactions occurring, but, I mean, it's going to be in this ballpark here, you know. Our funds usually are pretty close to budget, you know, so it'll, you'll have, this is really what I would present next month if you wanted to see it again, but are you looking for something different?
No, no, I guess, I guess I'm just saying, you know, with, with, you know, that whole working cash fund, you know, so that the graph will look different when it's all said and done.
After June thirtieth?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, actually, like the quarterly report that I just gave you, you'll see, we have the one fund balance exhibit, you'll see in different order, we'll have education first, but we'll have Ed, operations, you know, we'll have two million there, and we won't have a working cash fund after, after June.
Right, so.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to do with that last column, so that's why I'm a little confused.
Don't worry.
Let me know, if there's something you'd like to see differently, let me know.
It looks much better than my checking accounts.
So I don't know how quite, how best to state this. I've always thought of the working cash fund as a, I mean, we have, we have times in the year where we have money coming in and more going out and vice versa, and things come up and we need to take care of. And so in essence, we no longer have that working cash fund, but we're going to be expecting maybe to have more positive balances in the funds where that money is going.
It's the same bottom line, it just won't, you won't see that, so there's an unsettling part of that, but
Right.
The working cash fund, in terms of cash balances, we've not had to use the working cash fund for cash purposes. It's been a fund balance presentation primarily where it's, when we moved our early taxes to the, to the next fiscal year, back in ninety-six, I think it was, we dropped all of our fund balances, even though our cash position was, didn't change at all. When we took those early taxes out of the current fiscal year in June, we said, okay, we're going to take that money out, and we're going to put that into the next fiscal year. Our, all of our fund balances dropped a quarter, thirty-six million dollars. And so at that point, we had deficits in all the funds. And so that's when the working cash came in as a fund balance, basically, safeguard. So our fund balances looked positive, and they were. And we needed, and we still need to operate in this regard. But at that point, our cash position didn't change, and we didn't have to have the cash, as much cash, you know. It was there, and we didn't know what we were going to get into in the next ten years, and so it was a, it was a smart, safe move at that time, because we were, at that time, we had growing enrollment, and we were still learning how to live with the tax caps. And interim, we took a strike and everything. I mean, so we didn't know if we were going to need that working cash or not. The reasons for issuing it was valid, but at this point, we were going to say, let's just get rid of it, we have enough fund balance in the other funds, and let's just go forward with, offsetting those deficits.
I guess the most important thing is that you're, you're comfortable with this.
Oh, yeah, because, you know, because really, we have, it's, we're comfortable looking at thirteen million in working cash, but there's a deficit right there that it's, it's where it's going to, so, in terms of washing it all out, so.
And in terms of your colleagues, I mean, is this something that everybody's kind of doing now, or?
No, but I'll tell you, honestly, my colleagues probably didn't let their funds get negative because I didn't because I didn't I didn't worry about it. I've always looked at the operating funds as a total.
Okay.
Every time we talk to the collectively bargaining groups, it's the total, not the individual, doesn't matter, you know. And and that's another reason. We have a new team coming in in the next year for that, so it's simpler to look at this way, I think.
All right.
But but operating funds is, you know, always the bottom line. Other than the transportation fund, we could collapse all of our funds into the ed fund if we wanted to. And that would make us all a little nervous. But anyways, I am very comfortable with this. And there's many districts have used the ed fund, the transportation transfers, and also districts that have abated their working cash and abolished it. So I mean, these are very common in schools. This is not like once every 50 years you see this. This is something that there's probably 30 of these a year in different districts.
You're saying the ed fund is flexible enough?
Yes, the ed fund has every chart of every the chart of accounts for the entire district. So the every fund has the chart of accounts and all of those are represented in the ed fund.
Right.
It's for outside of Illinois, it's called the general fund and it's and it can you can spend it for anything. In Illinois, we have an education fund and we have an operations and maintenance fund, a very unique split of the general fund. But when we report the this in our CAFR, we combine the working cash with the ed fund that's reported there, and operations and maintenance is also considered the general fund, so.
Interesting.
It's just a different presentation.
All the same numbers.
So I know I knew this was and I've spent a lot of time trying to sort this out so so that I could, you know, it be as as digestible as possible.
As painless as possible for us.
So there's caffeine and a morphine drip in the next room. So we'd like to present that, I'd like to present this in May with, you know, with the action we already have. I just got copies today from our attorney of the resolutions. I'm pretty comfortable with how they'll be and we'll present that in in May. And then we'll have a hearing before that meeting. And I think we're going to have two hearings at the at the May meeting. Different, one is for another topic we haven't addressed yet.
Assist technology?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to go to Mr. Woodgazer now, I'll give Mr. Stalen a break. Breaking my voice back.
A little throat spray.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to share and answer some of your questions from the assistive technology recommendation that I had sent through a board memo through Dr. McDonald on April 10th. Really, the recommendation is is to hire a point four FTE to cover our assistive technology needs within the district. This is a cost neutral recommendation and I'll kind of explain that. Each year, we have to purchase, well, we don't have to, but we we purchase services through SACAD for assistive technology. And we've seen an increase the last three years of those services for AT needs. What that really, that's been directly tied to the increases that we've seen in our multi-needs program. So one example is next year at South, our four multi-needs classrooms are increasing student students in the program in all four of those classes. And then our T-99 program is also at the highest that it's going to be at for next year. And and a lot of the needs that are coming from our students, from our partner schools, which is, you know, our feeder schools, we're just seeing an increase in that. We've always gone over our projected totals, so right now, SACAD is recommending $28,000 that we would use for purchase services for assistive technology. Some of the details associated with that number is that it covers eight of our students that we currently have. We have far more students that have AT needs with incoming students and our current students. And so the kind of the cost neutral by hiring within our district, we actually, without obviously paying more, we can get more services that will help support our students for the same amount of money that we would be, you know, paying SACAD for that. I've also called SACAD to talk to them about that this year. I talked to their AT coordinator. She we we kind of talked about that, her recommendation or or just acknowledging that when districts start to have more AT needs, that they do start to look internally and then they use SACAD more for like maybe a coaching model. I talked to their business manager, Sam Kanata, about the exact same thing, and he's he echoed the same things that it sometimes is more efficient and effective to to hire within and use SACAD as a as a resource. So that's why we're, at least I'm recommending, that we hire within the district the point four rather than use the money to purchase the services through SACAD for the next school year.
Typically, this would have been part of the presentation back in February?
Yeah, I can explain that too. SACAD, we they don't project their numbers until like it's more towards the end of March. So the numbers, even though we kind of had a sense of, you know, the eight students that we were ongoing to support, the the 28,000 kind of when it came out, kind of, you know, threw me a little bit. And so I was, you know, just trying to be fiscally responsible and went to Pete and DeMar and and talked to them about, you know, were there options that we might be able to do? They kind of presented some ideas and this was, I think, kind of where we kind of landed with this would really make the best sense for our students.
This is really just a transfer. It's money would-
Yeah, I mean, the money we're going to spend, we're going to spend the 28,000. And and typically, we've actually gone over that because of other student needs that arise throughout the year. So really, that 28,000 most likely will be more than that.
Yeah.
That's what it's been for the last couple of years. So whatever they propose, we've always gone over. We did make a shift a number of years ago, and I don't remember, I was still a teacher at Downers South, but we we actually had a point four dedicated, a point two at South and a point two at North for AT needs. So we did it internally before, then we moved to SACAD. And I think now, just based on the cost, it just makes more sense to bring it back to the district and then still use SACAD if we need them for. And we review it every every year. But I will tell you that our working with our partner schools, their multi-needs population continues to grow. This would cover our, you know, all three buildings, so our, you know, North, South, and T-99 and our other district students. So it's something that would just in, you know, in in the memo I outlined, there's some major advantages as well as that person could be part of our PLC teams, part of our just team meetings, things like that. So they're an internal person that doesn't just come in, provide the services, and then, you know, goes in the next building. And that's a great service that SACAD offers. But I think at this point, we're just finding that this would be a better recommendation to support our students.
That's sort of like our going to our own transition program a few years ago. We reached a critical mass and it just makes more sense. I mean, will this come out of idea money? Or is it strictly out of our budget? I I always am a little confused as to where idea comes and goes.
No, the SACAD the SACAD purchase service comes out of our our local funds.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So I mean, it wouldn't be coming out of our grants.
So I have two questions.
Yeah.
The first one is, this is for a point four FTE. So if we think that we're going to use this person more as time goes on, at what point do they get benefited? Do they get benefits?
I think the point eight. Point five? Okay.
Well, it's a that's not true. Let me let me restate. It's there's a prorated-
Okay.
-opportunity here. So the more, the larger their FTE, the closer they are to the full-
Right.
-benefits. So this individual will have the opportunity to purchase, be a part of the benefits.
Okay.
And and I think to elaborate a little bit on that, the kind of my plan was to look to, we have a point four FTE that we need for speech at, you know, with the district that we proposed in March that was approved. Speech therapists are really the ones that are experts in the communication and the assistive technology and the augmented devices that we use for our students. So we were looking to kind of merge the point four and the point four together. The other thing it does is it also adds a little more attraction to hire, you know, a staff member with a point eight rather than a point four and a point four kind of out there. Because we'd be looking for a speech therapist most likely for to fill the assistive tech role, just because their expertise is with the communication.
Interesting. Hmm, okay.
And when we figured that out, we working with Mark and Pete, I mean, we kind of looked at the point four still, this, you know, kind of keeps us at the cost neutral even with the 28,000 based on that.
So even with benefits, it's at the cost neutral?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what about supplies? What about, do we have sufficient equipment?
Like that equipment? Well, that's, I mean, that's something that's ongoing where we purchase throughout the year. Like, for example, we had, it's all based on our IEP meetings and things like that, what the students need. So like, for example, we actually, I don't want to give him a, you know, a-
Heart attack.
Heart attack, but our computation, but we just had a meeting where a student had a lot of success with a device that is rather expensive, but it it actually has opened up the door for them to communicate where they haven't been able to do that before. And so, you know, sometimes we try to balance that through our grants, you know, and I we kind of work together just to figure out how the best way to to finance that.
But the SACAD amount wouldn't have covered any-
No, the SACAD amount doesn't cover any of the devices.
It's just it's just a personal cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Great.
Anything else?
Well, it seems like it's a cost neutral proposition that provides better service for our students, so that seems like a no-brainer to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We currently have a driver education waiver, the State Board of Education, and that allows us to charge $250 as a driver education fee. And also to use that amount of money to offset the costs of our driver education program. And our driver ed program, when you consider behind the wheel, as one teacher and two or three students, is quite expensive to operate. And so our our waiver allows us to do that. Our waiver's coming due, expires at the end of the year. We'd like to renew that waiver for the future. As a matter of fact, we are now allowed by the law to charge $250 per student. However, we were, we are not allowed without a waiver to spend that money to offset our costs, our personal costs. So the the waiver will be, we'll also have to be a public hearing on this waiver and the vote will be in in May.
Okay.
That'd be a phone meeting. Lots of public meetings.
Absolutely.
Have it all in one month.
We had three, our food and information requests this past month. All three of those were fulfilled with a letter from Mr. Stalen's office.
Anything else moving on to the consent agenda? We have several items on the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to talk about any of these further?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, with I just would like to just clarify that in the consent agenda, with the appointment to SACAD, that will be Julia Beckman and Terry Pavicich as the alternate.
Thank you.
And thank you both for being so gracious with your time and efforts.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
It goes most of the time.
My pleasure. So I moved.
See, he moved.
I just need a second.
Terry seconds.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Motion, consent agenda, Carries, recommendations for action, approval of textbooks?
Mrs. Akardi?
We have three textbooks, as you know, that were on display here at the ASC. All three textbooks are for are both the multicultural studies as well as the math three, our new courses. And then the Spanish one-
Spanish.
-will be a new pathway for us in terms of textbooks. We do not have any comments. No one reviewed the textbooks or made any comments. And so I would recommend that we approve the textbooks.
No comment.
No comments.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended textbooks for the 2015, 2016 school years presented.
Second.
Julia seconded.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, thank you. Resolution of the text rates.
Back to Mark.
Wait, go, Mr. Stalen.
I just lost my my link here, so.
Pretty self-explanatory.
You want us to move on and come back?
I'm sorry, I need to move the topic. This is just a reallocation of the taxes. Our our EAB did drop slightly, but it's it was just a hair. And actually, we we thought it would be flat, so I think we were, you know, we're like, I think we're two two tenths of a percent of that. We had new construction pegged pretty well. And so we, all we have to do is really reallocate the the levy to the way that we want it to go out. And that's what you have in the memo there.
Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing Page County Clerk to extend specific tax rates as listed for the tax year 2014.
Second.
Terry seconds.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Carries, award of big capital improvement.
Mr. Colajay?
Thank you, Dr. McDonald. This was a public bid for the replacement of the water line from 63rd to the building at South High School. Three vendors indicated interest, the project, it's a full replacement. The line runs north and south from 63rd right by the barn, the blue barn over there, coming into the building, about 500 linear feet. So it's full replacement. About a year ago, we experienced a split near the building. When we dug it up, we realized that this line has deteriorated, so we put it on one of the top priorities for this year. It includes the digging up, replacing the line, and also restoring the grass area. So three bidders, it was under budget with the low bid. We recommend a low bidder, Kendall Excavating, for the replacement of the water line at South High in the amount of $68,865.
Is that going to affect the softball field?
It will run through the, not the infield, but the outfield.
Out.
We're working with South High and their grounds people. The good news is, we are going to leave the line that's existing and put the new line in around it.
Oh.
So the shut off of the main water will be temporarily, just a few hours, a couple hours. So that'll be a a quick shot through the field.
Okay. Have you done work with Kendall Excavating before?
I have, actually.
So you-
And so has District 99.
Because that's a substantial difference difference in their bids.
Are there fees from Downers Grove involved in this?
There are. They've accepted all of our submittals and our designs. And part of this 68,000 is replacement of a fire hydrant, so that was an alternate that we have to accept because they want us to replace that, so we'll be doing that also.
How nice.
And were there permit fees involved, things like that?
Fees were, there were no fees.
Okay.
They did come back and added on a few valves that we did not expect, but that's fine, both sides. Usually, you just go with one. But I think all the recommendations were valid and just a couple thousand more in the package.
Okay.
All right.
I move that we approve the low bid submitted by Kendall Excavating for replacement of the water main at South High School in the amount of $68,865.
Second?
I'll second.
Rick, seconds.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Carries, resolution to honorably discharge?
Yes, Dr. Cupka, the administration discussed this with the board in closed session part of the meeting.
Make a motion to, resolution to honorably discharge educational support personnel.
Second.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Nothing else before the reception of visitors? Moving out of the reception of visitors, this is the second time tonight for people to approach the board, this time about anything they'd like to discuss. Hearing none, room will belong to communications and announcements. Report on Legislative Education Network of DuPage, Len.
Len will have its monthly meeting this Friday morning.
Okay, thank you. SACID, Julia?
We will be meeting next week, but just a couple of things from the last meeting. They're still, of course, working on finding space for all of our programs at SACID, but we had a really interesting presentation from our mobility, orientation and mobility people who work with our visually impaired students. It was quite moving, the kinds of things that they do to help these students get around into the big city, across these huge intersections-
Wow.
-et cetera, et cetera, and they do very well with that. It was really pretty impressive. And also, there's assistive technology that goes with them as well. That is about it, except that the support staff contract has been approved by the support staff and we will be voting on it at the next meeting. And that was a long, long negotiation, but it's all done now.
Yeah, that's been months.
Yes.
And do you have anything to add on the Illinois Humanities Council?
Just that we are going to, our quarterly meeting is going to be in Springfield on Thursday. We will be speaking to our legislators about funding the Humanities Council, which they haven't done for a really long time anyways. Probably be short meetings, but we'll see. Humanities Council has been actually having to raise its own money for the last few years and it's doing quite well, but it'll be a fun meeting, I'll be glad to report about it.
Terry, 99 Education Foundation?
We did not have a meeting this month, so I have nothing to report.
I know, Deb's not here. Do we have anything to report on IASB? We did submit last meeting, IASB did table call for recommendations, so you all got a copy of the last meeting.
Correct.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
A report on roundtable meeting with Representative Roth.
Yes. As you know, the last couple of meetings, probably about a month, month and a half ago, I received an email asking if I would be willing to attend a meeting about park testing with Representative Sandic and members of the community. And so I came to the board and asked if you would mind if I attended, knowing I would be wearing several hats. One, I'm a teacher in a school district that implemented park testing. Two, I have an eighth grader at Herrick. And three, I'm on the school board here at 99. And at that meeting, no one seemed to have any concerns, so the meeting was scheduled and I attended. And I attended and I felt the meeting was more to get, he held the meeting to kind of feel the beat of the street on park testing, cause I think he had some constituents that wanted to express their opinion on park testing. And so I went to the meeting and there was a representative from 58-2 and we both initially told the group that we were here as individuals, not as representatives, and they knew that and they were very comfortable with that. And it seemed to be more, there was a discussion about some people's opinions of the park testing, some people's opinions of opting out. And the main focus, I felt, was the people that were there were, were very much in support of a House Bill 306, which is a House bill that has to deal with the procedural aspects of opting out of park testing. And from the discussion of that House bill, it seems like right now, that's pretty much stopped in committee, probably won't be seen daylight for a while. But the discussion, it seemed like from, at least from my, saw at my school and from what I had heard about talking with this with Mark and Gina, I don't think we had a big opt-out. It wasn't, it seemed like this was a much bigger issue at the middle school or the grade school, much bigger. And so from my perspective, I couldn't say, well, you know, it was minimal at best and my son took it in eighth grade. And so the discussion, it was a nice discussion, it was short, it was only about 30, 35 minutes. And what I felt I offered, and it was very nice that they took me up on the offer, I really recommended, and I thought we would see them last Monday, I recommended, I said, we have meetings and we have a section of this meeting where constituents can come and express their opinion on things that are happening in the high school, and I strongly recommended coming to the meeting. And so after the meeting, I called Mark and told Mark what happened at the meeting and said, hey, we may have some people coming expressing their opinions about park. And I met with Gina in the hallway before last Monday's meeting, I really thought there'd be some people coming. And I told them, it wouldn't be a dialogue like we were having in Representative Sandic's office, it would be, you could express your opinion and I'm sure somebody would get back to you, whether it be Mark or Gina or even the building principals if there was a building issue. And they didn't come, but they sent an email the next day and as you noticed, then it started an email string that finally came to fruition the other day when Mark came back from, and replied back. And that email was pretty much what was discussed-
The meeting.
...at the meeting. And again, I, it seemed like there was a second email that I, and I recommended they call Mark. I said, call Mark, he'll pick up the phone, he'll talk to you. I said, call Gina, call Scott, cause there was an issue at North. And I said, no one would hang up the phone and not return their call and I, everything I said came to fruition. So I did not foresee this as a big political honest, it wasn't. And I think it was just a representative just wanted to see what was going on and it was, it was a discussion is all it was. And so I did not feel I was put in a position of representing anybody, cause I told them upfront, I'm not. And I felt I brought some perspective to the conversation, cause I've seen it implemented, I witnessed it with my son and I witnessed it here with conversations with Gina and Mark. So I did not foresee the emails, the emails that came about from it. I did not, that was not my intent. And I thought I was open upfront about the meeting and everything that I thought was hap, would happen, did happen. And it was, it was good. And I think going forward now, I think maybe some things will change and I don't know what's going to change at the, at the state level.
Right.
And I don't think Representative Sandic does either, especially with the change in the state superintendent and the board. And right now, we have to do what we have to do as a school district and we're mandated to offer the test and I think our hands are tied in that matter, whether we agree or not about it, so.
Our staff spent lots of time-
Hours and hours. And so that's, that's pretty much what happened and as soon as I, I didn't bother Mark on Sunday with it, but I was afraid I was gonna get here before six o'clock on Monday, so I called him in the afternoon, but then I still was able to get here, cause I really thought last Monday, we would have a couple, a couple parents come in and say, hey, my son took the test or my daughter took the test and here's what happened and we were not happy or we were happy and instead, we received some calls and I think that was, that's what I expected from it.
Well, I'll tell you, my daughter took the test, she said it was no big deal.
Yeah, my kid too.
Same thing.
So.
So.
I mean, testing is testing, I mean, it's-
So that's all it was. It was just, and I, another reason why I felt obligated upfront to say, hey, by the way, I'm going to this, because-
Oh, yeah.
I, I realize, I realize what, what was, what was gonna be discussed there, so.
I appreciate you reporting out and I for one, am more than comfortable you representing us actually in this and-
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, but in all honesty, I, going into it, my perception of what the meeting was going to be was a little different than what actually happened, knowing that a school board member from 58 was invited to be there too and, and so I-
And I did not know that, so.
Right, well, that's, I appreciate, and so, I wanted to say, and I think in fairness to you, I don't know that, it almost, it almost seemed like it was, it's not fair to you, because you shouldn't have to be in a situation where you're saying, I'm not here from the school board. I mean, you know, I mean, honestly, I don't, I think, I think we wanna have dialogue with the community and we're talking about ways to do that and, and this was certainly-
No, I didn't say I wasn't here from, I said I didn't represent. And my opinions were not, I was not speaking on anybody else that I'm on the board with. That's how, that's what, I was there.
But it makes great sense that you were there. I just, you know, I just wonder if, if going into it, if you'd had a better understanding of what was going to happen in terms of your preparation and how you might've been able to respond or, it might've been nice to have some staff support for that too possibly, I don't know, or maybe more than one of us attend. So, I don't know, this is just one of those, we've had incidents before and I just felt a little bit like, like Rick got pulled into something a little bit.
Thank you. I don't think so. I think-
You're okay.
And again, I think we have to remember that we have to stay above the political fray. And we all know what election occurred several months ago and who was involved and I think we just need to stay above that, so.
I do.
Thank you.
This has anything to do with that, but I appreciate it.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
So that's, that's the true Hollywood story.
You did my heat up, so that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, you walked out unscathed.
No, that was nice. And I think I met one of Mark's acquaintances, who a teacher used to teach here, and I had a nice conversation with her in the parking lot. You had mentioned her name, I think you know her husband.
Robin.
And she taught English here, 34 years retired.
Robin.
Robin Cedarblatt, yes.
I think, yeah. So, I didn't remember her name.
I do know her, I know both.
Right, cause when I was telling you what happened, you said, oh, I think I know her, so.
Okay, anything else on reports? Okay, we have a few upcoming board meetings. May 4th, we'll have a special meeting, seven o'clock here. He's there? We'll have the board organizational workshop meeting at 7:30. May 11th, we'll have special recognition open house meeting at North High at 6:00. May 18th, the regular business meeting at 7:30 here again at the ASC.
They're gonna be busy.
So if we hear nothing else, do we have a motion to be? Oh, gradu-
Congratulations, not on there.
It's coming up.
Coming up.
It's in May, too.
That's in May.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
To adjourn?